That was a long.
Sure was.
Slag is just right over there. So we'll stand up and turn.
All over, Brad. He's coming. He'll be here soon.
We're live on Facebook.
Are we?
Do you want us to continue to hold for SMU, Karen? Go ahead. All right. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, roll call.
Nelson.
Here.
Orson.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Wunschel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Moriarty.
Here.
Before we move too much further into the agenda, we have a seat occupied to my right, probably left to the home viewers. The much highly anticipated and hyped city manager, Dan Gifford, is with us tonight. So rather than wait until the city manager's report, I'm sure there's a room full of anxious people as well as the viewers at home who would like to hear from our new city manager, a position that has been vacant since Amanda Mack left in June. We've went through an exhaustive process, which has been covered in the press and in the public, and we appreciate everybody's involvement in that. And the result is the hiring of what we feel is our next excellent city manager. Dan's steady hand and leadership in the interview answers, I believe, as I've told you before, led to a big part of our decision. We had a great pool of applicants to choose from, thanks to the process that we used. And so with that, I'll turn it over to our new city manager, Dan Gifford, to introduce himself over the interwebs and on SMU to the public.
Hi, I'm Dan Gifford. I come here from, most recently from West Burlington. I've got over 25 years' experience as a city manager, two master's degrees, and that experience is weighs a lot heavier than the education. But I've been through a lot of this and a lot of different cities, and I really appreciate the warm welcome I've received since I've been in town. My wife and I just loved the community when we got to tour, and, you know, we really, we're really happy to be in town. We've got, we're happy to move in. We're moving in Thursday, so we'll be here all the time after that. Look forward to participating in community events and all the different things. And anybody that out there that wants to stop by and chat, please do. I'm happy to hear from citizens and as well as anyone else that needs to stop by and talk. So I have more to say during the administrators or the managers' report, but I guess that's all for now.
All right. Thank you, Dan. We will move into the consent agenda. Item number three, excuse me, 3A is a motion to approve city council minutes of October 18, 2021. B licenses, renewal of Class C liquor license with Sunday sales and outdoor service for Spencer Municipal Golf Course, subject to the final approval by the Iowa Alcoholic Beverages Division. C is a motion to approve purchase of five replacement SCBA tanks for the fire department from Feld Fire for $41,806.45. This is a CIP item. D is a resolution approving tax increment financing indebtedness certification to the Clay County Auditor and the annual appropriation of certain rebate payments. And E is a motion to approve urban renewal port, report for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. First by Bill.
Second.
Second by Lauren. Any discussion or questions on these items? Ron?
Nope.
Nope. Good. All right. Reaching for the vote, not the mic. Okay. First time for everything.
Yeah, man.
All right. Vote by machine, please.
Got to be on my best behavior as the new city manager.
Dan is here.
You're on a roll there.
Yeah.
Nelson, aye. Orson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
All right. Thank you. Item four, new business. 4A is a motion to approve agreement for grant of permanent utility easement and temporary construction easement with Philip A. Deffer and Margaret B. Deffer in conjunction with the 2021 West Fourth Street and 32nd Avenue West Storm Sewer Project.
I'll make that motion.
First by Donovan.
No, second.
Second by Tracy. Just a reminder to the public, I've had some questions on this. This is the activity that people see out on West Fourth Street with BD construction out there, putting the storm sewer in from that area running, it would be east to the river. Any other questions or comments? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Item 4B is a resolution to request the assistance of the staff of Northwest Iowa Planning and Development Commission for the administration of the Safe Routes to School program.
I'll make a motion on that, Mayor.
First by Ron.
I'll second.
Second by George. Let's see, Warby or Mark White, you want to talk a little bit about the, or whoever, the Safe Routes to School program for the public?
Good evening. The Safe Routes to School program was a competitive grant program through the Iowa DOT many years ago. And the funding's been changed, and it was a little harder to capture that grants, the grant money. So we were so successful with improving sidewalk and walkability through our community, improving safety, that the city felt it was of our interest and the community's interest to continue that. So the school and the City of Spencer formed a partnership where each contribute 30,000 per year, and then we come up with Safe Routes to School projects and improvements. They could be the crossings, 5th Avenue East is coming up to improve the walkability to Fairview School. That'll be in two years. So that's a shared project. And then we use Northwest Iowa Planning to administer the, the part of the project for the education and coordination, walking school bus and events like that. So it works well. We're proud of that program and look forward to that continuing.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions or comments on 4B? Hearing done. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item 4C is a motion to approve an infringing use agreement with the Grand Avenue Outreach Spencer, Iowa.
I'll make that motion.
First by Donovan.
Second.
Second by Tom. Questions or discussion on this?
Don, I just have a clarification. Do we have to do this every time? Because we've got quite a few infringements. This is because they changed ownership? Is that why we're writing with a new infringement agreement? Or do we have to do that every so often on all of our agreements?
It's because of the ownership change. Those infringing use agreements are written so that they're not transferable or assignable, essentially so you have control when there's a new owner.
Okay. So how do we keep track of, you know, do we just kind of like this after a while? I mean, because it's been, what, eight or 10 years since they took ownership, right?
Well, there's been several changes along, along the way between the owner back in 88 and Grand Avenue today. But we don't have, we have a way to keep track of infringing use agreements.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Ron. Any further comment on 4C? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Item five, department head reports. We'll begin with the planning department. Alec.
Good evening, everyone. All right. So in the planning department, I know you just recently heard from me a bit, but we are working to update the food processing, custom butcher shop ordinance that we were working on in the last committee of the whole meeting. We've met with communities from around the area to see what they're doing with that kind of stuff, and we're finding everything's pretty similar, so we can update that and bring it back to you. Other things we're finding as we're moving along into the fall year, we're getting increased dog and cat complaints about them running around outside. We just want to remind folks that please be in control of your animals. We don't like to have them on the streets running around, not within the yards. And then the, in three days here, what is it, November 5th, the flood plain maps will go into effect. We have made all those preparations prior to, so everything's good to go with the DNR and FEMA. If anyone has any questions about their property, don't hesitate to reach out to us. We're happy to help with that process and help facilitate some of those flood map questions. Other than that, I'll keep her brief. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Alec. B, library in front of you. You should received a printed out report from Paula Grimm, the library manager currently at the Spencer Public Library. If you have any questions on that, please contact either Dan or Paula. I'd like to thank Mandy Mulhausen for her many years of dedicated service to the City of Spencer. And just remind the public that we are in search of and have posted the job description for a new library director. So if you know of anyone in your network, your family, anyone you know who has experience, we would encourage you to encourage them to apply for the position. It's a fabulous community and a wonderful library and a very dedicated staff to serve in fulfillment in that position. So with that, item C, fire department. Where's Mr. Stover? There you are.
Good evening. For the month of October, the fire department responded to 52 calls. Of those 52 calls, 10 were fire-related with two false alarms, a couple of working structure fires, and an elevator rescue. The remaining balance of those calls, 42 were EMS-related with the engine responding out of the station 34 times and an ambulance calls eight times where we transported a patient to the hospital with the ambulance that we housed in the station. We had 10 trainings for the month of October, fire and EMS-related. And then finally, October was Fire Prevention Month, and we'd like to put out a huge thank you to the schools for allowing us to come into those schools and talk to the kids. We were out about 15 times over the course of 10 to 14 days talking to the kids, and we contacted just over 1,600 children, talked to them about fire prevention issues. Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mark. D, police department. Chief Warburton.
Good evening. Month of October was a little slower for the Spencer Police Department. We responded to 835 calls for service and performed 22 arrests. Month of October had the Spencer Police Department, Public Works, and Fire Department working jointly to put on the homecoming parade. There's a substantial amount of work that goes on behind the scenes to make that parade work. A lot of coordination has to be done between the departments to keep businesses operating during that time. So everybody came together, and we were glad to help put it on a successful event. The drug drop box there at the Police Department for unused medication continually, is continually being used. This last month here, we dropped off at the DEA over 60 pounds of unused medication. So we have a continued supply there and seems to be working out good for the department. Lastly, I'd like to welcome Justin V. to the communications center. He's, was hired here to be our next dispatcher. He's currently, he comes to us from Spirit Lake, and he's currently participating in our training program. And he's, he's expected to complete that training in mid-January. So any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, chief. E, Public Works. Mark.
Good evening again. We're moving pretty quickly, so hopefully I don't break the cycle there. So the street division, last month, I always say that October and April are the two busiest months for us usually. I always say that we wait all winter to wait and think about our projects and can't wait to start them in, in April, and then we push to try to get them done in October towards the end, and it almost always is that way. But anyway, the street division, we've been receiving loads of salt, of installed snow fence around the community, conducted our annual snow meeting that we have every year with the drivers and kind of review the routes and the process. This year, we have three new, three new operators, so that'll, that'll take some getting used to for them. We're still, we're still doing construction projects, had an emergency, kind of I call an emergency, but an intake failure. Real right, of course, right at the middle school, right at the right turn only corner, so that wasn't exactly, that wasn't exactly perfect for planning, but that happens sometimes. Try to blade, it's important this time of year when you get a little moisture finally to blade those gravel roads and streets, and we've been adding material. We have alleys to work on as well. You know, it's, they work so much better with the moisture, and then, you know, we can get, move into that freezing temperature. Street Division's still working on the RCC restroom project at the solid waste division. We treated 700, or 7,700 feet of sewer for root control. So that's a foaming product with an applicator that goes into the sewer line that's pulled back, and then we come back in a couple of months and check the progress and televise and see how that operation was working. Of course, our landfill superintendent is in attendance tonight, so Dan Chisholm came over to help welcome Dan in. We've got Dan and Dan, I guess. So the airport, quarterly inspections were performed. Those are some of the things we don't talk about. The, we inspect all of the doors, all of the buildings, the runways, the lighting system. So that's done, and then maintenance is followed up on that. We do have a fuel system issue out there. The jet fuel is not developing enough pressure. That has to pop off the check valve in the plane, so we'll have to do a rebuild on the jet A fuel pump. Public Works is busy in the office with locates inspections. We've been helping the library lately with some maintenance projects. We're glad to do that, help them work through some of the issues they may have with the building. We're also in the process of, you know, overseeing and managing the wastewater treatment plant project. It's out there clicking along all the time. You may not hear a lot about it, but there's some construction decisions that have to be made and follow up on that. Also, we have two open positions. Landfill has a maintenance position that's part-time. That could be flexible hours. That also uses a CDL driver to help with leachate. We also have an open solid waste operator position. So anybody be interested, please check our website for details. Did I break the cycle? Any questions? Thank you.
Mark?
Mark? Mark? I tried.
Have you received any feedback from the DOT? I know you're working with them on the McDonald's intersection and the Menards intersection on traffic studies.
Lauren, timing is everything. We just had emails today on back and forth, and Mark Warburton has been awful patient with that because we've had that information a couple of weeks. There is a recommendation to lower the speed limit in front of Walmart in that area. It's a little, I don't want to say complicated, but we want to follow up on that. That requires an ordinance change, so you folks will have it in front of the council to do that. We have talked about possibly having that at committee meeting so we could review those recommendations in a little bit of a more casual setting. So part of the process has begun with part of that project. So, okay? You bet.
Glad to. Thanks, Mark. Parks and Rec, Jared.
Good evening. Just kind of wanted to touch base a little bit on the aquatic center. So what we did is we ran through our irrigation through a couple of different cycles, just to kind of get, gather some data. So we're currently waiting on this next billing cycle from SMU and so we can kind of cross-reference the irrigation system that we ran and what SMU's numbers look like. So that's, that's currently where we're at. We haven't made any determination on, on anything yet. We're just trying to go through, through some of that data still. Trail repairs out at Staley's. We'll finish up with that tomorrow, get in concrete for the last little stretch here before the end of the season. Get that, few more panels repaired. We'll have that section of trail opened up hopefully by mid to late week this week for normal use. And then we'll do a finish up, a few more of those repairs in the springtime when it gets, gets a little bit nicer. At our next park board meeting next week, we go through our fee structures for the aquatic center and the campground. So we'll take a look at those again like we have in the past to see if we need to change anything, make any changes, keep the same, you know, those sort of things. So we'll look at that. We're going to look at potentially restructuring the playground program. We've, we've met with YMCA and kind of talked through some scenarios to, to maybe change that a little bit. So we'll, we'll go through some of those options there as well. And we did have a mower issue a little bit sooner than, than we'd like. We, we planned on trying to replace one here next year, but we'll also go through some quotes and hopefully have some recommendations on mower replacement here after that meeting as well. Continue, we're going to be working on just some of our annual goals and objectives within the department on different things that we want to accomplish throughout the year, smaller projects, just regular work plan, that, that sort of stuff. So working with staff on that. And then here at the end of the month, Scott and myself will be going through a playground inspector safety certification course. We currently don't have a certified inspector, and so to have some of those would be good. It would lessen our liability a little bit, and we can accurately and safely check all our playgrounds and inspect those ourselves. So. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Golf course, Brian. I don't see him here. I know he emailed his report out to us earlier. He's gone. Okay, thank you. City attorney's report, Don.
Thank you, Mayor. I can be brief. It was a fairly routine month. No new claims or suits to worry about. Four areas in which we were most involved is working with the library board and staff. Haven't had an airport to property acquisition, working with Alec on, on those zoning issues that are going to be coming forward, forward to you, and of course, working on the hospital street vacation. Any questions for me?
All right. Thank you, Don. Item six, engineer's report, Jim.
Good evening. You know I can be brief. So I do a little project update, active construction projects. Right now, we basically have three projects active. One is just wrapping up the sewer structure rehabilitation project, which you're probably not aware of. There's some concrete work on the lift stations. That is, they did the final coating last Monday, so that project is done. The most visible is the Fourth Street overlay project. The overlay is in. All of that work is done. There's concrete work left to be done by their sub. Their sub is gone this week. We added some work to the project, and as part of that negotiating process, they, they wanted to peel off for a week, and so this is that week, and that's why you don't see anybody working there. But when they come back, they've got about a short, two blocks of curb and gutter to put in, and then they'll raise all the manhole castings. You see the cones in the center of the street. We pave over those castings, and we come back and adjust them to grade, to get them to the right height, and then backfill that with concrete. So that work remains. And then hopefully, they're going to stripe on Thursday, the painting stripes. The city will do the parking lanes, and the contractor will do the centerline stripes and the lane striping. So that, that work should be done this week. And then finally, we mentioned a little bit the Fourth Street and 32nd Avenue West Storm Sewer Project. That's across from the sheriff's office. That starts right down there in the corner in the river bottom. And I guess I would like to thank Dr. Deffer and Peg Deffer for that easement. They were very easy to work with. Granted that, granted the city an easement to discharge across that river bottom. So, so that was very nice of them. Adam Delosse started construction, doing some excavating. You'll see stripped topsoil back. That's what the piles of dirt are. Stripped the topsoil, done, done a little bit of exploratory excavation and opened up the end at the river, letting that bleed out. There's groundwater there, and they'll be putting some wells in this week. Pipe should come this week, and so we should see some digging, hopefully get some pipe laid yet toward the end of the week. And that's all I have, and if there's questions.
Any questions for Jim?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Item seven, city manager's report. Dan, here's your first one.
It's my first day, so I don't really have a lot, but thankfully Teresa gave me something to say, so. There's a, there's a couple of meetings we need to put together and committee of the whole meeting regarding the ward redistricting and all of that business. So Teresa had that all figured out, but we need to get that approved. So we need a committee of a whole meeting to go over the, the map that the planning department Teresa put together and get that approved by council.
Right.
And Parks Recreation and Culture Committee needs to meet about the aquatic center and some larger projects at some point. And that's really all I have.
Any questions for Dan? No official questions.
Do we want to try to come up with some dates tonight for those? Or would you rather, we can poll you tomorrow?
Yeah, I'd do that.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you, Dan. Item eight, mayor's report. I feel like there was collusion ahead of the meeting. If we're all brief, the mayor will be brief. So I just have a few items. So again, welcome, Dan. I'd like to thank the community that showed up not only today to welcome Dan ahead of the council meeting, but also during the interview process, to meet all the candidates. We know your lives are very busy, and we do not take for granted the amount of time that you put in to support the city government. I'd like to thank especially Brian and Jessica and the rest of the staff for all of the time that they put into the search process and the council for having the fortitude to use an internal process rather than an external process. I'm sure both would have merited good candidates, but we're all excited about having Dan here. I want to take some time and touch on the meatpacking soundbites that were, ran on KICD. Thank you, George, for covering the meetings. I've had some questions back on that, and I just want to be very clear about what, what we're doing, why we're doing it, and the timing of what we're doing. So obviously, there's a historical significance related to the term meatpacking and the scope and size of meatpacking operations. One of the top questions we all get as elected officials is what are you all doing for business development? officials is what are you all doing for business development? And the first thing that we can do in business development is to make this a community in which somebody who would like to locate a business to understands the process in which their business would fit into the community. So, if you jump in a time machine and you go back about three, three and a half years, we hired David Toyer, which we've referenced a few times, to go through our code book, scrub some items, look at language that's either outdated or language that's contradictory. And one of the items that Mr. Toyer pointed out related to ag processing, specifically of animals, but just ag processing in general, and where does that fall in our manufacturing code and further refinement and that sort of thing, not only defining it, but where can it and can't be done in town. So, there is, we constantly are approached by businesses who would like to either locate here, doing some research, shopping around four different communities. And so, as referenced in the committee meeting Wednesday night, there was and is someone interested in locating a business in the community that deals with what I would consider meat locker. I think that's a term that most people can connect with. So, that's similar to what you see in many different communities, and we, without using, you know, too much specificity, you know, Ruthven has a, a processing, you know, meat, meat locker facility. Holstein has one, Orange City. There's several communities. Because we are an ag-based state, there are a lot of what I would consider meat lockers, you know, small to medium-sized lockers, not to the scope and scale of what you would traditionally think of when you hear meatpacking or slaughter facility. That's not the first thing that comes to mind of some of these smaller niche facilities. What last year during COVID 2020 showed us was food insecurity and the fragility of the food process, especially where we live. We take it for granted, I think. We drive down the road, and we see all sorts of crops. In fact, Mark White and I were having a discussion last week about just how far grain travels to get to its destination. You know, we drive by the same farm field every day, and we have an elevator, and we think, you know, it, at least I think it's easy to think, well, all the grain ends up at the elevator, and then, you know, it goes some other place. Grain and milk, especially are trucked a long distance to get to whatever markets they get outlet to. And what we saw in meatpacking, and specifically protein that's available to local consumers, when that supply chain was disrupted at the large scale, if you recall, you know, we were, we, the chamber and Tyson generously donated many, many, many hundreds, probably in the thousands of pork loin to give away to people. You saw milk across the country being dumped because of supply chain issues. And so, Governor Reynolds got behind the niche industries within agriculture, so those medium to smaller producers in a lot of different areas, and one of those areas specifically was meat lockers. So, if you recall, again, jumping a time machine to 2020, when food scarcity started to hit the shelves, people in our area, I think because we live in an ag area, started to buy whole animals or half of animal, and then I'm sure you can recall discussions in your workplace of, I can't get a slot at the locker to get the animal processed. And so, Governor Reynolds has recently put up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards incentives to either expand or create new meat locker-type businesses that can locally process smaller amounts of meat. So, fast forward to, from what David Toyer identified in our code to today, I'll say, but Planning and Zoning has been working on this for a year or, or better, maybe two, two or more years. So, the challenge, and if you heard KICD's report, Don, City Attorney, referenced this, is that currently in our code, the only animal that can be slaughtered and processed in the community of Spencer is chickens. And as we know, we have a lot of pork and a lot of beef in our area, as well as wild game. And what we need to do is update our code to allow for that type of business, if they would like to come, to be able to locate. So, now the question becomes, where can you locate? And currently, in our code, E1, which is out in the Green Industrial Park on the east end of town, is the only place you could locate a facility. As we've touched on before, a lot of these, I would consider them niche meat lockers. I grew up in northeast Iowa. There's a meat locker in Edgewood, been around for many decades. They just expanded for the third time in the last twelve years. They put together a great product. They have a retail front. And so, if you have a locker processing facility that also has a retail component to it, it doesn't really make sense to locate in an industrial area. And so, what we're trying to do as your elected officials is to weigh through the business development aspect of this, somebody who would like to come to town and create jobs, but also the sensitivity of the scale as it relates to animal processing and meat lockers and the terminology that we use. And so, just for complete clarity, that is what we're trying to do. We are trying to take an industry that has many different levels and size and scope and not use one code language to cover everything. We want to be able to fishbone it out, so depending up on the size of the operation, and if there's a retail component to it, how could that business be met? Now, I also want to be very clear that that does not mean that this particular business is coming to locate here, you know? Business is, business development is a process. This is part of the process. There are some very public things that need to happen because our code needs updated, and that is what we are currently in the process of doing. And so, just wanted to let everybody know that, and if you have any questions, we're more than happy to answer them. Utilities received a question today about utility movement with the hospital project, if it moves forward, and the hospital has committed their concern, the citizens' concern was, are the taxpayers going to incur any cost to move utilities in the project, if the project goes through? And the hospital was asked that question on Wednesday evening last week at the committee meeting, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the answer back was, the intention of the hospital is to pay for any utilities, whether they're gas, electric, water, whatever that cable that might need moved, that would be absorbed in the cost of their project. So, the second question related to that that they had was, are you going to get that in writing, Mr. Mayor? And I let them know that our City Attorney, on multiple occasions through this process, has said he's not comfortable with a third and final reading until all of the legal terms are spelled out in the operating agreement that would occur between all parties involved. And so, just wanted to answer that publicly. Told them I would do that during my report. Tomorrow is Election Day. Hopefully, if you're not voting tomorrow, you've already voted. It's the greatest gift that we have in the country as far as governmental process. Your vote is sacred, so please go sure, make sure to go out and vote. It's at the Clay County Regional Event Center, no matter what ward you live in. Go out there in the fantastic pole. Staffers will get you in the right spot and get you to your vote. I'd also like to thank the county auditor and all their processes they go through and tabulate the votes. So, it's a, it's a late job, you know, it's, a lot of hours get put into it. There's a pretty strict process, and we thank everybody involved in that, not only the voters, but also the workers. Fall is a time of transition. I'd just like to encourage the, the public that we're in transition at the City Manager position, we'll be in transition in our library. Obviously, our seasons are transitioning. When I was out delivering parts to a company today that has several pieces of snow equipment, and it was sunny, not eighty, but you know, it surely didn't feel like it was going to storm, and they were preparing all of their snow equipment. It just reminded me that we also have to have the diligence to be able to prepare ourselves and our process to be ready when the storm hits. And so, I think we're very comfortable now that we have a full dais up here. We're excited to move forward in that process, and we thank the community for their support in that. My final item would be, this is when we move into budget season. The staff is already really busy on the budget with the department heads and the staff. We, I think, as your elected officials clearly have an appreciation for the inflationary aspects that everyone is feeling right now. Fuel is up, the cost of goods is up, groceries are up. We understand that, we get that. This is a little different year than normal. So, what we're going to see as we do our budget, our input costs are going up, just like yours is, but also the projects that we're looking to do and how we're looking to spend our money, sometimes growth is necessary, sometimes it's elective, but no matter what the, the economic environment is, we're going to push forward to try to make the best financial decisions that we can related to how we spend your money. And so, just wanted you to know we're beginning that process today, and if you have any concerns or questions, certainly reach out to us. And with that, I would entertain any questions anyone would have. I was brief.
What?
Crossed off ten things here. All right. Upcoming Council Committee Reports, upcoming meetings. We have a regular City Council meeting on November fifteenth. Dan alluded to a committee of the whole that Teresa or Dan or whoever will send out. Any other meetings that you can think of? Nope. All right. Also, good luck to all the candidates tomorrow. As I've, a couple of them reached out. I offered, you know, if you had any questions about the city, whatever, good luck tomorrow. And as I've encouraged everyone, everyone should run for public office, I think, because not only do you learn about your community at the local level, you end up knowing a lot more about yourself through the process. And so, it's a great process. Win or lose tomorrow for all the candidates, hopefully they have enjoyed the process, and I know I've enjoyed watching the, the forums, especially, you know, we live in a great community where people who are competing for the same spot, I think, also support each other and aren't divisive. That's one of the great things about local politics here, is that they're nonpartisan, and you, you really see people trying to move forward the community. So, Item Ten, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims. First by George.
Well, second, I got a question.
Second by Bill. Bill?
I'm a little confused with what list is, because if you look at the list that's on my computer right now, it's February second to February fifteenth and twenty-one.
Brian?
I want to make sure we know what we're approving.
The banker always catches it.
Well, I thought it was kind of odd when I was going through, and I saw snow in the wall. I thought, wait, are they really late billing, or they're anticipating a snowstorm?
Mines.
Mine shows, January second to January, or?
Are you on the black again, or the?
I'm on the one, and I hit the button, and it goes, comes up.
You want to come down, Brian or Teresa, and look at?
February, March.
His is February, March.
Mine's November.
Mine's September.
Yeah, mine was, yeah.
Could be looking at an old agenda.
Mine's four, six, four, nine.
Mine's, that's her agenda.
It's the first, Dan Gifford.
Bill, mine's from four, sixteen to four, nineteen.
Brian, what kind of, what kind of show you running here, Brian?
I want to make sure we know what, what we're pulling.
Well, you should have been the ones I sent out Saturday.
Mine's eleven.
It is. Lauren's the only one that's got it right.
No, mine is.
Well, those two are okay. I'm all okay if they want them.
Yeah, that's the one that I had.
I don't know what the line says, four, six, that's fourteen.
That's strange, because that's the one that I have uploaded.
Yeah, mine's September.
Important question.
Did you open through the browser or by swiping right and then swiped? Okay. George went straight to the Russians.
Yeah, I got February first, Brian. I can't explain it.
I can't either, because, oh, my, it was all.
I printed mine from, from my office today.
So, so let's, uh, let me, let me ask this question, just so the public understands. So, we get sent the link to the agenda on Fridays. Has everyone looked at the link, and are you comfortable voting on the information that was sent to you in the packet on Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
All right. Everybody's good?
Yep.
Thank you, Bill. Any other questions or comments on item number ten? All right, I would entertain a vote here, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven, other business opportunity to address the council. Would anyone like the mic? Podium? Nope. Someone wants, yes, George.
I'd just like to.
You want to turn, sorry, George, you want to get your mic? There you go. Nope, nope, yep, there you go. Mic's on.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
I just wanted to remember our former State Senator, Lee Holt, and encourage everyone tomorrow, being it's his voting day, to vote early and often.
Yeah, I remember it saying that.
Thank you, George. Anyone else like the mic? All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. First by Donovan.
Second.
Second by Tracy. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I can't even.
Sounded unanimous. Meeting adjourned. Have a great evening.